All right, I want to welcome everyone to the City Council. Our regular meeting, we're here at the airport, is August 8th. If you will, if you'll bow with me, we'll say a prayer and then we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Lord, we've come to you today and thank you for the blessings that you've given us, those that are spoken and unspoken. Lord, I pray that you give us wisdom today. We pray for those in our community. Lord, pray for what's happening around our world, Lord, that you give everyone guidance. Lord, I thank you for the election last week and the chance that people got to give out and give their voice for our community. Thank you for the council members that we have that serve with us here. So, Lord, bless us and be with us. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Erin, do we have any public comments?
No, sir.
No, no public comments, okay. All right, we'll move to action items. You have a fiscal year '25 budget amendment. This is second and final reading ordinance, 24027.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye, we have Resolution 24R24. This is the schools fiscal year '25 budget amendment.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Today I'm presenting a resolution to recognize new revenues awarded to the city schools. These revenues were approved by the school board on July 23rd. The city schools received an award of $85,000 from the United Way. Grant funds will be used to contract with Stars Nashville to provide additional school-based therapists for our students. Additionally, grant funds will be used in partnership with Reed Succeed for parent engagement events. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions, slow move.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, well, Mayor, hold on just a second. I just wanted to commend Dr. Duke and his people at Murfreesboro City School for getting our school off to a smooth start again. It was really exciting to see a lot of happy faces coming into those classrooms and the way it was on the Facebook site, anyway, there were lots of pictures of smiling children that were full of new backpacks and ready to go off. So I just appreciate the organization, appreciate the effort of the teachers, cooperation of the parents, and certainly the work of the staff and administration in getting our school year off to a fine start.
I'd like to compliment your teachers and your staff. Yesterday I went to Kurt and I, and we greeted the kids. We were there, you know, dancing and, you know, welcome back. My bones were sore after all that, but they liked the high fives. And today my church is going to 10 schools welcoming these kids back. So the kids and even the teachers are very enthusiastic and I really appreciate that.
Mayor, if I may say one thing as well. Our maintenance facilities group, today we went through our vertical construction meeting, the fact that they got three cooling towers replaced and three schools and four schools with new HVAC equipments replaced through the summer before school started. A big adder boy for them getting that done in such a, you know, condensed period of time when folks are out of school.
I got to go, was it this last Thursday, they had 850 some odd teachers and staff members at MTSU. So their week just didn't start this week. There was a lot of preparation that led up to that. And I wanted to be able to do the clap to make everybody be quiet, but I did not do that. So I should bring, start bringing the gavel, you know, from here on out. So, but thank y'all for your hard work.
You guys, we appreciate the support.
All right, we'll move to retail liquor certificate of compliance. This is super non-wine and spirits and it's an ownership change.
Yes, we have two that council needs to approve separately. The first location is at 730 West Northfield Boulevard, Suites E, F, and G. All requirements have been met, we recommend for approval.
So moved.
Second. Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. And so item three and four, are those the same or do we need to?
It's a separate location with the same store name.
Okay, so we need, we need to also have a motion for the retail liquor certificate of compliance for super non-wine and spirits, and this is also an ownership change but a different location.
Move for approval.
Thirty thirty-five, okay.
Yeah, there you go. Good luck figuring out who was the motion in the second on that.
I'll send the motion.
Okay, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Have ordinance, item five ordinance, 24025, this is the Ethics Code. Mr. Tucker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is, the ordinance before you is substantially similar ordinance to the one that I presented at the council workshop in July and then presented at the regular evening meeting in July 18th. However, there are some significant changes to address some of the current concerns or requests that were raised by council members at those meetings. I'm going to start with two of the more minor ones, but nevertheless meaningful. To add some clarification in the definition section, I added definitions for what constitutes a financial interest and what constitutes a material financial interest. So those, the hope is that those definitions can provide some greater clarity to people going forward. The most significant difference, though, between this ordinance and what I presented on July 18th is that this ordinance removes the provisions related to establishing an ethics commission to review and oversee the investigation of complaints against members of city council, appointed officials to, say, the planning commission or BZA or Parks and Recreation Commission, and complaints against what I would call city officers, the city manager, city attorney, city judge, city recorder, city treasurer. In lieu of a planning commission, what I am proposing is something that is modeled off of procedures that have been established for the city of Lebanon.
Say, in lieu of a planning commission?
Oh, I'm sorry, in lieu of an ethics commission. Sorry, I misspoke. In lieu of an ethics commission, I'm proposing a process that, I suppose that would make council members' lives easier, if I eliminate the planning commission. But the process that would take place is that if the city received a complaint against a member of council, an appointed official, or one of the five employees appointed by city council, then that complaint would be, if it met the minimum technical requirements of an ethics complaint, which includes it has to have the name of the complainant, the name of the person who is alleged to have violated the Ethics Code, a set of facts as to why, what the alleged misconduct or ethical violation is, and that the complaint is sworn under oath. If it meets those technical requirements, that complaint would be forwarded to city council for, to take action on. And what would city council would do ahead of time is designate three attorneys who do not have, who don't reside in Rutherford County and don't have their principal law offices in Rutherford County to serve as ethics investigators. And once, once the complaint came in, council would meet to appoint one of those three investigators, one of those three attorneys, to investigate the complaint and come back to city council with an advisory opinion as to whether there was an ethics violation. And, and then city council would then take whatever action they, the majority of city council deemed appropriate based on the advisory opinion.
Any questions, Mr. Tucker?
I think before this offer of, I think this policy is one year. I think it's going to increase transparency and accountability for all of us on the council, all of the folks on various boards and commissions, every city employee. So I think it's a great step in the right direction. I want to thank you, Adam, for your work on it. I also want to thank Councilman Wright for his work on it and kind of pushing this forward. I would like to make one amendment to it, though. I think we had discussed this at the last meeting, that time in place would be kind of a one year, somewhere in there, Adam, you'll have to find it. I think Councilman Wright and I had kind of mentioned this, perhaps it should be two years. So I'd like to make a motion to amend this policy. Instead of a one-year timeframe, it's a two-year timeframe, and that's my motion.
Second.
And just to clarify, that would be changing Section 2-322A1C where it says one year, it would be two years.
Explain the two-year stipulation.
Basically, what the, what the provision says that an official may not, and an official includes any member of city council and any person appointed to serve on a city board, commission, committee, authority, from providing services for compensation directly or indirectly to a person or entity in connection with a contract, development project, or other matter that received approval from the city for a period of two, two years from such approval if the official voted for or otherwise participated in deliberations related to the contract, development project, or other matter.
So give an example of that, please.
If I was a realtor and I voted on something in planning commission or council, and then the builder, developer wanted to hire me as the realtor to sell those houses, I would not be able to do that until 24 months after the vote.
Okay. I haven't been long getting up, so I got to let my mind wake up here. Question.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure I understand it. So after that two-year period, it's okay for you to participate?
You could, after that two-year period, you could perform work in connection with that development or contract. But if the person, if the, if the official abstained from the vote.
They could do it immediately.
They could, they could do it immediately. They just would, they could not participate in the deliberations, they could not vote on the matter. But if they, if they abstained completely, then they could, you know, as soon, you know, the next day, they could perform work on.
Then this goes back, I guess, to my thinking. It just seems like that particular part of the Ethics Code, we're keeping them from coming in the front door, but the back door, they can come right in. And the bottom line is, everything's the same. I mean, I just don't understand that.
What?
Well, in other words, I may recuse myself from a vote. Well, it doesn't matter. If it passes, I'm going to get to do the work anyway.
If you accuse yourself, yes.
Abstain.
But that's what I'm saying, so.
I think that's what she's saying is, you still get to do the work. So if you put a policy in place to say, if you voted for it, you got to wait two years, it doesn't make sense.
But if you, you recuse yourself, you can go that next day and participate. You know, I brought this up, what, a couple of meetings ago. I just don't, it doesn't matter. I mean, to me, we're just wasting space in our compliance, just to put that in there because it's not going to change anything. And when you're talking about code of ethics, it's designed to make things better. That's what it's designed to do, is to make things better. So I guess my question is, why are we doing this? Because it's not changing anything, not one thing. I own a, let's say a flooring company, and I'm part of a bid that's going to redo the floors in all the schools. I may not be the main contractor, but I'm a subcontractor because you're going to use me, they're going to use me, going to sub me out, my business. So it doesn't matter if I vote yea or nay or recuse myself, either I'm going to wait two years to do the project, or I'm going to do it the next day.
Well.
Same thing is, the bottom line is, my company is going to get that bid. And I, I'm going to benefit from it, from being on the council, because it's my company.
Just some clarification, like the scenario that you described is, is something, is covered in, on another section of the ethics policy. Like you cannot, as a council member, or a planning official, or a member of Parks and Recreation Committee, you can't provide a contract for services to the city. You can't work on a contract for services for the city.
Hidden partner in the company that's doing it.
You have, you would have, you would have, I mean.
I have to let you know that I am, my business is part of this job. So getting back to your point, what difference does it make? You're closing the front door on my business. But I'm going to come in the back door because we're going to vote on it anyway, and my company's still going to be working.
You would not, you would not be allowed to, to work on that project with your company. If you, if you have an, if it's an, if you have an ownership interest in that, or a financial interest in that company, you would not be able to work on a contract for the city or the city schools. That's a, that's a state law provision. That's, that's not what this, this, that, what Mr. Maxwell, the section that Mr. Maxwell was seeking to amend does not address the situation that you're talking about. What this, Mr. Maxwell's proposed amendment and the section that we're talking about right here addresses, say someone comes in for a rezoning or to get a development agreement approved by the city. The, a council member, we'll just talk about council members here to keep it a little bit more simple. A council member who voted for that rezoning or for that development agreement could not go and work on that, the property that was rezoned, or that development project for two years after they voted or participated in the deliberations on that rezoning or development.
But after two years, I can?
Yes.
That's what I'm saying.
Well, right now, right now, they can, there's no restriction.
But even if I recuse myself, two years or one year, whatever, I'm still going to get that contract with, with Austin. Austin has the business, he's going for the bid. I'm going to be his floor person.
I think what it creates, Madeline, is it creates more transparency and accountability. So the general public will know exactly where a person stands when they're voting.
Exactly, and I understand that.
In my case, I'll become a painter again. So we vote on something today, rezoning, and I say yes, and it's rezoned and turned into townhomes. And that builder, developer comes to me and says, I want you to paint these. If I'm within the two-year window, I voted on it, I can't do that work. And if I think that there's a possibility I might do that work for transparency and accountability, I should recuse myself so that if he or she comes to me in a year, year and a half, I could do that work.
That's exactly what I'm saying. It's the bottom, I'm looking at the bottom line. The bottom line is, you're going to do the work anyway, whether it's two years or two months, you're going to do the work.
I'm not going to do the work if I vote for it because that's a violation of the ethics policy.
Okay, you think.
And it's not good for the public to think that you're profiting off your position.
It happens all the time. So coming, closing the front door, I'm going to come in the back door because I'm going to still get the bid. So is it fair to me, to my company, to not let me bid because, I mean, that's my livelihood We voted to let the people do the flooring, I mean, do the whole school. I'm just a subcontractor, but it's not under my name. We are partners. Austin will put his name down, my name won't be down, but I'm still going to recuse myself. But the bottom line is, I'm still going to financially profit.
That would be a violation of state law, what you're describing.
It happens all the time, is what I'm saying.
But I, I, I don't, I don't know whether it does or doesn't, but I'm just telling you the example that you are describing is a violation of state law.
Is it fair to me, with my company, even if I recuse myself, is it fair to me, you all put stipulations on it, when I'm going to get the job anyway? Have we ever not voted on a job?
No.
Someone is involved in it?
No.
Have we, council? No.
What, I don't understand what the question is.
Let's say, here, let me go back to my flooring company. We doing this, building a new school, we getting ready to build. I'm the person contracted for the flooring. I'm going to recuse myself, okay? Still, the council votes for this contractor to do the job. I'm just a sub. So you saying, no, don't reveal yourself, well, go on and reveal yourself, because you're going to get the contract anyway. And my question is, has, as a council, have we ever not voted on a project like that?
I know Mayor McFarland's abstaining from stuff he's been associated with. I'm abstaining on stuff I've been associated with. Ms. Everwater has.
Let's stop right there.
I abstain.
You abstain, but we still vote for the job, so you're still going to make the money.
I think, I think.
I didn't make any money.
Well, I mean, your business is still going to profit from it.
I don't have a business, Madeline.
Well, we're using examples, we're using examples. Okay, let me go back to your example. You all three accused yourselves. The council votes for the bid anyway. So what bottom line, so because we voted for the bid, am I going to tell you, oh yeah, by the way, we got to get another contractor, your business, your company can't participate? Then we still put this stipulation, two years, the bottom line is, you're still going to get the contract.
Well, two years eliminates a lot of the work. So if you're waiting two years, Austin's painting job probably is given to somebody else because it's been, it's, there's a two-year timeframe. So that, that's where the two years.
But, but Madeline, I think the one thing to consider, if we're talking about a bid or a contract, Adam, correct me if I'm wrong, but we go through a low bid process.
Correct.
And a purchasing and bidding process that if a council member or an elected official was submitting in bids for a project, then that council member would have to disclose that they were bidding on a city project.
Right.
Then if the general contractor, who the contract would be under, decided to use that person, that councilman, council member would still have to disclose, but at the same time would be part of the low bid that was selected, so the taxpayer would be getting the low bid regardless of what the council member, but, and so I'm saying this from my standpoint. I recused from a project two or three weeks ago that I had nothing to do with, but we own the building next door, and there is the possibility that there'd be a cross-access easement that we have no benefit on, but I abstained from it just because I didn't want anyone to even think that I was voting on a project that we could benefit from. So I've not seen anything since I've been up here where a council member will vote on a project that, you know, there is a direct benefit, like that person is involved in a project that they're voting on. Now, the contract part process, I think, gets murky because there's also state law that comes into play that you have to follow through to be able to even bid with the municipal government. So, am I wrong on that?
No, I mean, first of all, we do have the bidding process, which requires transparency. Secondly, state law says, and this is TCA Section 6-54-107, says that no person holding office under a municipal corporation shall, during the time for which such person was elected or appointed, be capable of contracting with such corporation for the performance of any work that is to be paid out, paid for out of the treasury. What that means is, you cannot have a contract with the city to perform work. That's different than, nor shall such person be capable of holding or having any other direct interest in such contract. So what, that is state law. That prohibits council members or planning commission members or Parks and Recreation Committee members from performing work outside of their role as an official for the city. What the, the section that we're talking, that talking about in which Councilmember Maxwell was proposing to amend is broader and addresses where a private entity comes to the city for a certain, for a certain approval, whether it's a rezoning approval, whether that's a special use permit, whether that is a development agreement, whether that's a TIF, something, whether that's a pilot, and then, then having that council member, that planning commission member perform work for that development project. That's what the two-year limitation is on.
I understand all that.
Yeah.
And I'm just trying to protect, okay, for instance, Shane, trying to protect you and what you do. I mean, you know, just trying to, you know, but, and that just hit something I was thinking about.
Let me say this real quick. From my standpoint, and everybody sat up here with me for 20-plus years before I was on the planning commission, if I'm anywhere remotely, or there could be a perception that I am involved in a project, or could be seen to be involved with a project, as an abundance of caution, going all the way back to my talk that I had with Susan McGannan when I was first elected, I abstain, period. So I'm, I mean, like, I'm not worried about the ethics part of this because, I mean, if there's anybody up here who gets accused of being in the development and building industry of, it's me, and, but, you know, my thing is, I'm going to let people know from the very get-go, here's what I'm abstaining and what I'm doing. Vote for me or don't vote for me. I'm going to be transparent, let everybody know where I am. That's why, I mean, I don't bid on city projects. Center for the Arts emailed the other day asking for a bathroom renovation, and I'm like, look, the city gave that building to the Center for the Arts at one point. I, thank you, but no thank you. So I'm not like a vendor, though, Madeline, which I think is what you're asking, that maybe owns a flooring business and, you know, does bid commercial projects. So that is completely different, I think, than voting on zoning requests and, and those site plans and those type things. So it's confusing because it's really two separate things. One is doing bids and services. We talked about this, if, you know, Bill is very transparent, taking pictures for Murfreesboro Little League on city property, but Bill, everybody knows that Bill does that. And I'm sure if there was a photography contract that came for the city, Bill would abstain from that. So the goods and services portion is completely different in how it's regulated than voting for a project that you could perceive to do work on. So that, that's all I'm saying. We need to make sure that we keep those two separate as opposed to jumbling them all together, because also there's state law that is required to be followed through the bidding process.
Correct.
Yeah, and here again, and I understand that, and I appreciate your explanation, Shane, on that. It's just like Kurt, you own a paving company, I don't mean to pick on you.
You're not, I'm good, I can handle it.
Okay. And let's say Shane is building a project, and you get.
I want to do the closings.
Huh?
I want to do the closings. We'll just make it a group effort.
Shane bought the real estate from Shane.
True.
Shane's the realtor, Jamie's the closer.
And Austin's painting it.
Bill did the photography.
Yeah.
So we're all in this.
Project is not passing.
No, I, no.
Nobody can vote on this.
Nobody can vote on it.
I'm the magician, I'm going to bury all of y'all. So I got a bigger part than any of you.
Have that on their bingo card?
I have said, after 25 years of marriage yesterday, that Ashley's been slowly trying to poison me for 20-plus years now, so. This thing I want to say on the public record, she did it. On record, yeah.
Again, that code of ethics is to make things better, and I really personally don't see how it's making things better. And it hit a nerve with me when we were talking about the low bidders, we got to get a We got to get away from the low bidders, guys and ladies. We have to get the best people for the job, not the low bidders. I mean, just because my company is the low bidder, because what we are looking at, well, what I'm seeing, the same contractors are getting these same jobs. Then when I ask the question, you know, why did writing company, why do they get all the contracts from the city? Then I'm told nobody else bids. I find that a little hard to believe. So as a council, this is another thing we can talk about. We can see these bids coming in. Because some of these jobs, I don't see how just one company bids, because the same company gets all these jobs. But that's another thing, no, let's not even address that, that's something else, but.
That's a workshop item for October.
Yeah, that's a workshop, yeah.
Can we table this?
Hold on a second. But I wanna make sure, as we talk about all these hypothetical situations, the city follows state law in purchasing procedures when we're given these contracts. I don't wanna, I mean, I know, Madeline, we see these, and we've had this discussion before, but those contracts are just not handed out. There's a process that has to go through. I don't want the public who's watching this to think that there's like this Wizard of Oz behind the scenes that are handing stuff out to everyone. There is a process that has to go through, correct?
Correct, for, yes, state law and city code, any project that's more than $50,000, any contract for goods or services for more than $50,000 has to be competitive, competitively solicited. So that's either through an invitation to bid being advertised or a request for competitive sealed proposals being advertised.
Yeah.
And, and below 50,000, there is, if, there is an effort to get at least three quotes.
And Madeline, I think.
Especially on routine work.
And I, I completely don't disagree with what you're saying from the low bid standpoint, because I don't know where Chris Griffith is, but I know Chris will probably tell you in road projects that we've done that the low bid hasn't always turned out to be the best responsible bidder. But, you know, that's the guidelines we have from state law that tells us we have to take the low bid if they are a responsible bidder. That's that old saying, what did one astronaut say to the other when they're about to launch off? Doesn't it make you feel comfortable that we're sitting in something that's built by the low bid? Okay, sorry, go ahead, Mad. Kurt, no, you were next.
Thank you. Can we table this and discuss this at our retreat?
There's a motion, second on the floor.
We have a, we have a motion, a second on the floor. For the amendment. So let's get the amendment either deferred or voted on, and then we can move to the overall thing. So we have a motion, a second, on the amendment to change the one year to the two-year. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
No.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklett?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
No.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Now let's move to the ordinance 24025, which is the Ethics Code as amended.
Move to approve.
Second.
What, what, so what are you saying now? This is the whole Ethics Code.
This is the whole Ethics Code.
Going into adoption without discussing it further.
Well, no, we're gonna have, we have a motion, a second.
We can have a discussion now.
Just asking what is the motion.
We can have a discussion now.
Let's open it for discussion.
And there's, it's also possible for a motion to defer at this time.
Yeah, that was the motion I was anticipating, I was just catching up.
So we have two motions, so what are we talking about?
There's only one motion on the table, but there could be a motion to.
Table for approval, so we, is there discussion on that?
Well, I, I kinda believe there's a little bit more discussion that could take place in this. Some of the nuances of it, I'd like to, a question you might be able to answer now, but, you know, basically, we're putting, we're the adjudicating body, the council. It would come back to us to make the opinion whether, once it's been investigated and the, the facts have been confirmed, then it throws back on to the council to make some kind of judgment.
Correct.
We haven't, in this ordinance, defined what's reasonable. I mean, to have some kind of idea, do we throw them off? Are you, are you no longer a councilman? Do we have that kind of power to, to, to say, you know, you're superseding the public's opinion? I mean, I, I think we need to have something in here to give us some kind of direction or more definitive kind of opinions and direction as opposed to just a blank slate of saying, we can do whatever we want to do, it's just up to us. I mean, we, we pull this out of, and which is, I, it's not necessarily a bad thing that we don't have a Ethics Commission, although there's something to be said for that, is that they're independent from the political body. But if we're gonna throw this back on us to make the decision, I think we need a little bit more definition within this Ethics Code to tell us, what are the parameters that we can, I mean, is it just a blank check? Do whatever you want to? So if somebody failed to fill out a form, or somebody didn't realize that it was within that two-year window, that it was an ethics, it was determined to be an ethics violation, what do we slap them on the hand, or do we kick them off council? I mean, I mean, I think there's, I think there needs a little bit more discussion to this, and there may be some other items that we need to bring up. So I would like to see in a more casual setting as opposed to yay or nay on a, on a, on an Ethics Code, because this is something we haven't really had, right? We, it has, it's been throughout a lot of different documents, and we've kinda congealed this into a document that applies to.
Right, I mean.
Something we haven't had before.
We, we, city's current ethics policies and conflict of interest policies are in the employee handbook. Those policies apply to city officials and to city employees. I will, I will say that Section 23, 2-3, 28G addresses what is, what actions the city council can take if they, if there is an ethics violation found.
Could you read that to me, so?
Sure, yeah. A city official or officer, and officer meaning city manager, city attorney, city judge, city treasurer, city recorder, found by city council to have violated the Ethics Code is subject to punishment as provided for under the city's charter and/or other applicable law, including censure by city council or removal from office in such manner as may be permitted by law. I'll come back to that in a second. In addition, city council may vote to refer the matter to the District Attorney General or other state or federal law enforcement authority to pursue appropriate action under state or federal criminal statutes. Now, that, that remedial, that paragraph addresses remedies. It's a remedial paragraph that's consistent with a lot of ethics policies and ethics codes of municipalities across the state, specific to, you know, specific to what city council could do if they found, let's, we'll say, a member of a, the Planning Commission or BZA or Parks and Recreation Committee. Because they're appointed officials, basically, the two options would be censure and say, don't do that again, so public censure, and the other one would be to remove the person from office. If it was a council member who violated, let me take it back. If it was a city officer, so the city manager, city attorney who violated it, it could be censure or termination of their employment agreement for cause. Or without cause, if, you know, if they didn't want, if the party said, you know, we don't really want to litigate this issue in court. And then.
Is there an appeals process in, in regards to this as well? I mean, does.
Yes, you could appeal on a writ of certiorari to Circuit Court.
Who would that appeal?
Circuit Court. To Rutherford County Circuit Court. And.
Needs to be discussed a little bit farther.
And then if it was a city, if it was a member of city council, the, the options would be censure. There is a provision in the charter where if someone has, and basically failed to uphold, if a council member has failed to uphold their oath that in, in the, in the view of, of the other members of city council, they can be removed from office, I believe, I don't have it pulled up in front of me, but I believe it's not a simple majority. I, I believe it's two-thirds, but I, I would need to double-check that. Or the matter, under state law, could be referred to the District Attorney General for an ouster lawsuit to have the council member removed pursuant to an ouster lawsuit. So those, those are the, kind of the remedial options. You could, and, and everything, everything else would be, it would be really fact-specific in terms of what remedy would be appropriate.
Well, even, even with that clarification, and I appreciate that it's in there, but I, I just feel like we need to chew on this a little bit more. This is a pretty dramatic step to take. It's a good one, I think it's gonna, like Austin had said, it's, it's, I think it's a good, in a good direction. I appreciate Sean moving in this direction, proposing it, but I just wanna chew on it a little bit more before I actually say, you know, we're, this is definitively, and I understand maybe the nuances, because I had to ask a question about something, I, I had read this thing, and it didn't stick out in my mind. So I, and I think chewing on this a little bit until our workshop, having a little discussion then, and then bringing it back as, for a vote after that is something I would like to see happen, so. I think a motion to defer is always available, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna defer.
No, we can't, we've got a motion in a second.
It's, but you, before you can vote, you can also vote, you can vote to defer even with the motion. I mean, you can, and you can vote it down and then move forward.
I'll withdraw.
Okay, you're withdrawing, you're, okay.
Good luck with kicking the can down the road, to be honest with you. I think it's a good policy, it increases transparency and accountability. I think Adam's put in a lot of good time on it. I think, as has Sean, I think it's sound. My opinion is, we should, we hadn't approved this first reading, approved it second reading, discuss it more in October. And if we have to amend it in October or November after a vigorous discussion, I'm okay with that. But I really don't understand why we're delaying this or just kicking it down the road. That's, that's what I'm kinda stumbling upon right now, I don't understand that.
I can understand what you're saying, too, Austin, because in our workshop, if we spend two days talking about this, it's still gonna go the other way, so it is a waste of time. I don't feel like anybody's gonna convince anybody else other than just give your opinions on things. So this has been the same way on the council, and I've been on the council 14 years, and it hasn't changed. So, but we wanted to discuss it, but I don't see any different outcome from it.
I'm always open to amending anything that we look back and say, you know what, we made a mistake, we need to change this. But what we find is, this is a very sound and reasonable, even the steps that Adam just outlined, I think it makes sense to me. Sean, you withdrawn your motion, so I'm happy to make a motion that we approve this.
A motion.
Somebody's willing to make a second, but Bill, you're wanting to defer it to October.
I just, I said defer. So Sean, you just redrew your motion.
I withdraw, but I, I agree with all, we've already kicked this can down the road, what, three months? And we're just, just keep kicking.
Kick it down till October, and then go to a workshop and kick it down the road some more. It's like, let's make a decision or move on. That's the way I see it, I think it's a good decision.
Yeah, Adam's done, what, three years' worth of work on this?
At least, at least, yeah.
I, I just wanna make one comment, I mean, we don't always agree. But in this case, I mean, I've read over this thing a bunch. If there's a perceived conflict of interest, just abstain.
Yeah.
That's, that's it. And, and my whole thing is, like, after talking with Darren over the last two or three weeks, we have got so much that we need to accomplish at this work session, or this workshop. We've talked about this, and we're gonna continue adding more stuff to talk about. My thing is just either vote for it or vote against it. And then let's move on to the next thing, so. But, I mean, that's just me, I mean, but we've got, I mean, how many items do we have on our workshop now?
Well, hell, a lot. And I've, I've been telling folks, this is like we've got a pack mule to get over the, the mountains, and we're loading her up, so we've got a day and a half to get, to get it done. So this, I don't mind, if, if you all have the time, we can make it a two-and-a-half-day retreat. We can always add time to it, but we, you know, we've got a lot of ground to cover in a day and a half.
I, I felt like I needed to say that, and this is after, you know, Darren is continually talking about, hey, here are things that I really need to get direction on at this workshop. So the workshop, if we're gonna defer this, I would recommend this not be at the workshop. We can do it another time if we wanted to defer it, but, I mean, we've got debt issuance that we need to talk about. We've, we've got all of these things that.
The plans we need to talk about, yeah.
That we need to be able to focus on, and so.
I put out.
If somebody makes a motion to defer, I would recommend, don't put that on the workshop, or this, I don't wanna call workshop, this retreat.
Right.
Because we're, what's gonna end up happening is we're gonna just hit the highlights on stuff that we really need to dig into, or feel like that we're gonna be rushed on stuff that we really need to, to get some definitive answers on.
And I'm happy to make a motion to approve, but I believe you've got a motion to defer, Kurt.
I do.
All right, we have a motion.
And we can do that, and we can talk about it next week or whatever, but.
Yeah.
I'm just like, Bill, you know, there's certain things that we do need to discuss.
Either one, I realize going into more depth, but the bottom line is, you know, we're talking about kicking the can down the road, the, the can is the problem. I mean, wherever, you kick it or throw it down the road, the can is the problem. And if I, like I said, I own this company and I defer, y'all just shutting my front door, and I'm gonna come right in the back door, and I'm still gonna get the bid. So, I mean, but anyway, that's, that's what we're here for.
Madeline, I know you wouldn't do that. But here's what I would say, if somebody is, if the council is closing the front door, and somebody's trying to come in the back door, that I wanna publicly say that if I know that, I will be the absolute first person to bring that up to every single council member, and then when it comes time for that person to run for office, I will be the first one to make sure the general public knows that we've got somebody who's trying to come in the back door. I know you would never do that, but I, as we talk about these ethics things and we throw out these examples, it gives the, the impression that there are council members who are doing that. And what I wanna make sure that the general public who is watching this, that's not what I have seen. So I think what we're talking about is putting a mechanism in place that protects that from happening, so.
It protects, it protects that perceived notion that everybody on Facebook is talking about.
That's what I wanna just make sure.
I'm not, you know, pointing the finger at anybody. I'm just saying that we don't, you know.
To me, this is an easy decision, easy discussion, I understand why it's taking so long to get to a yes or no.
Well, let me, let me speak to something, because my point is not that the work that has been done is not competent, it's not complete, and it's welcomed. My, my point about thinking about this a little bit more definitively is to understand, is there opportunities in here that we haven't clarified that we can move forward in even making it more transparent, dealing with all of these issues that we talk about, ethics? Is there something that we can, you know, and thinking about this is not kicking it down the road, continued deliberation, it doesn't mean that you're kicking it down the road, it means that it's fully thought out. And that, that's the point that I would make, there's different, it's how you phrase something that makes your, your point. Kicking it down the road says, no, that's irresponsible leadership. That's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is deliberate over this enough to where, when we see some weaknesses in this, this is not something we need to rush, okay, we've worked on it for three years. Well, quite honestly, I don't know, until the last time you brought this up, I didn't even know we were working on this, and that's my fault, I guess. When, but he, but it, working on it for three years? I, I wasn't aware that we were working on an ethics policy. But now that I am aware of it, I'm glad that it's being done. I appreciate the work that's being done, the nuances that we've covered in here, giving clarity to our employees and to council with what is an ethical behavior and what isn't. I think even having that standard there kinda keeps people honest, is to realize, hey, there's an opportunity for you to be held accountable for unethical behavior. That's great. You know, I, I'm just not rushing to the thought of saying, here's the document, it's good, I'm happy with this, we've done our job, check. We've checked off our job, we've got a, a document that we've, we put there. I just wanna make sure that the document that we approve, and this has happened a couple of times, the document that we prove is, is the document that accomplishes what we want to accomplish. And that's the reason I say. And that's the reason I say defer this thing. If, it doesn't have to be during the workshop. I, I just thought that was a little different dynamic of our, our discussions happened a little different in that workshop, but if we don't have time for it, okay, let's do it a different time. I just want to chew on this bone a little bit more before I say, yep, you know, and I, I don't think that's irresponsible. I think, in fact, that's the responsible thing to do, is to think about this thoroughly before we actually make an opinion. But if you, if there's four votes for it, move it forward.
Now, I want to clarify something you said. I'm not accusing you.
No, no.
I'm trying to protect you.
Yeah.
Because, you know, because, people do say that. I'm just saying, I'm just trying to protect you.
I, I appreciate that, but I don't need protection on that case, because anybody who's been up here with me knows that if there's anything close, I, I mean, I don't need, I mean, I appreciate that, but.
I think that if, if we're gonna defer it, it's pretty much the same document that we had a month ago, so how, what is a reasonable amount of time to defer it, to, to look at the same document we've looked at three times now?
Let's do this. We have a motion to defer. Is there a second? Second. All right, we have a motion to defer, and we have a second. Is there any discussion on the defer?
Yes, I, I think that question needs to be, I mean, what is a reasonable amount of time to, to look at the same document we've already looked at three times?
Well, I, I think more importantly, Sean, it, I understand, Bill, I agree. I am not one to just check boxes. That's not, that's not leadership, that's not effective, productive behavior, just to check a box. But I do know that we've talked about this at multiple workshops now, and nothing's changed significantly each time it's come back. So I would implore those on council that don't agree on, on making a vote today, what changes do you want to see in ethics policy then? Like, I, I don't, because it does kind of seem like we are just kicking the can down the road, and I'm for kicking the can down the road if we have changes that, specific changes or things that Adam needs to work on and bring back to us. But I don't know that I can support just saying, let's talk about it again next month.
Yeah, that's kind of what I'm saying.
You know, like, but if there's something specific, I want, because I'm with you, Bill, like, I want to dive into that. I, I mean, I'm a lawyer by trade, and so I want to know the definition of every one of these words, and that's what I've talked to Adam about, and that's what I've talked to Sean about. So I'm for continuing this discussion, as long as we have something within it that we know needs improvement and that we want to work on, not just a general, well, let's talk about it next month.
Well, my 14 years' experience on this council, I'm gonna tell you, we can have all the kind of meetings we want, we can have 10 more meetings on this. The bottom line is, it's gonna pass. So, I mean, you know, I, I'm telling you, it's gonna pass. So we might as well vote on it. This is called politics. That's what it's called, politics. It's gonna pass, so there's no need of us meeting and beating ourselves up. It's gonna pass. So, hey, let's take the vote, let it pass, and let's move on to item number six.
Pete and Mattel is Cheerios this morning.
It's called politics, you all. It's called politics at its best.
Right now, I believe it's a motion to defer by Kurt and a second by Bill, so that's.
And it's gonna pass.
Well, we should probably make some small talk until the mayor.
I, I was gonna say, let's, let's, let's hold, let's hold this vote until our mayor comes back, but I can.
He wants to be the tiebreaker.
Yeah. Let me, let me speak since.
Free vote, that's what it's gonna be, you all.
I wanted to address her thing, her comment, too.
Jay, I want to commend you, because I'm like you, you know, we've, we've talked about this, we've seen it, we've pushed it down, we've seen it, pushed it down. Adam has made, I think, some pretty good revisions on it, you know? So unless there's just something significant to your point, I'm kind of like, why are we deferring it? Is there something just glaring that I'm missing, or you're missing, or somebody's missing? And I, and I can agree with you, Bill, not wanting to rush into something, but I feel like we've been talking about this forever now. It's like, it's, it's here, and, and I agree with counsel on the Everwater.
Okay, okay, let me.
Nicest thing you've ever said to me, Austin, thank you.
Love me.
I have lots of nice things to say about you, so.
Let me speak to what just took, took place today. Today, we voted on a two-hour, I mean, a two-year change, okay?
That was discussed last time.
It was discussed, but it, you know, there was something discovered when we looked at it. When we looked at this a little bit more, we refined, and, and it was a good proposal. If you noticed, I voted for it. To know exactly what needs to be changed, sometimes it takes, you know, if it's three months, I mean, do you really think an ethics policy that we have not had for 100 years? And if it takes four meetings instead of five, instead of three? If it takes a little more consideration? I mean, the issue is, why is the rush to make a document, to, to vote a, a document? I mean, I, I realize the politics, goodness, we've just been through a race, you know, so you understand politics, we all understand that, and we all got an education. We all learned a little bit, hopefully. But, but the issue is, to me, is, I don't know, I can't tell you. It's something that came to mind was the, the issue that, that Adam addressed, and I'm glad to know that it's in it, but I would like some time to even look at what his adjudication of our responsibilities on making a decision, what are the parameters that we have as a deliberative body, the ultimate deliberative body? What are the parameters? Does that address all of them? I mean, just having it read to me, I, I, it sounds good, but I'd like to think about that for a while. I'd like to chew on that bone for a little bit, so that I know, is, is there something in there that I, that hasn't been addressed properly, or could be addressed even better? And, and the legalese, sometimes if all you need to do is read it, I, I applaud you. But sometimes I, I, you know, a photographer's a little different. We don't have brains like, you know, title people and real estate folks. We, we, we've got to, we've got to chew on those bones for a while. And so I, my, my encouragement is, is that there is no reason for us to rush to this, and, and think of this as, if I vote as, for a, a deferral, that it is, it is a bad, you know, a denial or something, or kicking it down the road, I don't like that analogy. I think the issue is that you can't actually say, I'd like to think about this a little bit more, and if it's a difference between a month on something that we haven't had for 100 years, let's make it, let's make it right. And even if we don't change a, a jot or a tittle, if we don't change any item in what's being presented, let's get it right. Let's be everybody, I mean, I don't want to have an ethics vote where it's divided. I don't want an ethics document voted on where it's four-three. I, I don't want that. And if it takes somebody on our, as colleagues, if we respect each other's idea to say, you know, they need to think about this a little bit more, I'm not gonna say, well, we've talked about this enough, I'm ready to vote. Well, I'm glad you're ready to vote. I'm glad that you're ready to vote. But if, if our colleague says, wait a minute, I'd like to think about this a bit, a deferral is not a bad thing. If it takes us an extra month, if it takes us a few weeks to come to consensus and say, okay, I'm happy with this, I want to have a vote on this ethics document that says seven, zero.
Well, I think that's what my question after the motion was, was what is the reasonable amount of time to, for, defer, defer, that's fine. What is the reasonable amount of time to look at it? Is it a week, two weeks, a month, a quarter? What, what do we need to look at this to where we can all study it and, and look at the document?
Speaking for me, I'd say a month.
I would say a week, just because I've read it now twice. So it's helpful to read it, it's also very helpful to talk to Adam. I don't know if I could go a month, but I could go with a week.
Well, if we're not meeting next week, so at minimum, you're at two weeks, so you're somewhere between two weeks and a month, and just, y'all figure that out, I'm, whatever, I'm good. I have no problem making sure everybody's comfortable, but I don't want it to feel like, I don't want the people watching this meeting to feel like we're kicking the can down the road to make it where one of our councilman, colleague council members, are we trying to cover something up? Are we trying to make something look bad? Because, look, if you go on social media, and yes, Shane takes the brunt of this, and he abstains constantly.
Not a lot, but, because I don't do a lot here, I mean.
But you do.
Does everyone abstain?
I've, I've seen, I've seen a lot of us abstain, but I, I don't want the perception to be, and I have no problem deferring, so let me make that perfectly clear, to get this right and make sure everybody's comfortable, I have no problem deferring. But I don't want the perception for the public to be, we keep deferring this down the road because we're protecting someone or covering something up, or there is somebody doing something bad because they're, we've shut the front door and they're kicking in the back door with a boot. I don't want the perception for that to be there. So if it's a, if it's a month like Bill's talking about, or, or two weeks where Austin is, or whatever that date is, let's all study it and get, get it right and come back with educated responses and educated study of the document, and then let's vote on it. It doesn't sound like there's four votes to pass it or deny it, so the only option is really to defer it. So.
My final comment is, I'm a no on deferment. I'll be a yes on voting to approve it today, but that's my final comment, I'm gonna be quiet.
We already got a motion in.
We got a motion. So, so Bill says, so Bill says he needs a month. If we're not gonna meet next week, could, could we make it three weeks, Bill?
Yes.
So, call the roll, Shane, please.
Okay.
Wait, wait, what day is that? The 29th. Do we have a meeting on the 29th?
It would be, it would be the 22nd and the 5th is when we've got scheduled meetings right now.
We don't have a meeting on the 29th?
Bill, are you okay with the 22nd?
Late today.
We are meeting the, we're meeting the 5th.
We are meeting the 5th.
But not the 29th?
I was not anticipating the 29th, no.
The 5th is the swearing-in ceremony.
Okay.
And we were gonna have the council meeting after the swearing-in ceremony.
Right. Can we do the 22nd?
Yes, we are having, we are scheduled for the 22nd.
Right, can we talk about?
No. Mr. Shacklet, are you okay with the 22nd?
Ah, that is.
Just keep it after 29th. My birthday is the next day I won't be here. I mean, I'll be living, I hope.
I'm going with you. We're going to Atlanta.
I say I won't be here, I, I hope I'll be living, but.
Be here, just not.
I'd be six feet up instead of six feet down.
22nd be fine.
All right, 22nd, Kurt.
I got you.
I'm gonna use my mom voice when I say this. The 22nd is the last time I want to hear the words ethics policy out of the city council. We're voting on it then.
Yeah, and I, yes, mother.
Thank you, son.
I, I want to, I have no problem with it. I would vote for it today. I'm gonna, out of respect that there are other council members that want it deferred, I respect y'all enough that I will vote to defer it.
That's right.
But in Jamie's mom voice, you know, I want everybody who's sitting here, read it, and if you have an issue with it, you've got between now and the 22nd to get with Adam to make substantive suggestions back to the council.
Solutions, solution-driven.
Yeah, but, you know, we, we've got a lot of things that we also need to focus on coming up, too, and I'm, Bill, I'm, I'm with you, so.
Yeah, I'm the same way. I'm a yes today, it sounds like Austin's yes today, Shane's a, but I'm fine for the respect of my fellow council members, if they need to feel comfortable, let's get them comfortable and let's vote.
All right, so I'm gonna change, in the spirit of.
Solidarity.
Solidarity, and that beautiful orange shirt that you're wearing.
That's right.
You're taking your son to UT, go ball.
You done?
Mom voice again.
I'm gonna change, out of respect for my fellow council members. I mean, yes on it, but if they need more time to think about it, then I'll vote to defer.
He has on orange socks.
Yeah, I got on orange socks, so there you go.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Please call the roll. This is for deferral to the September, excuse me, August 22nd meeting.
Ms. Everwater.
Hi.
Ms. Gales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye, let's move to item six, notes live termination agreement. Adam, thanks for your hard work on that, too.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Does not go unnoticed.
Thank you.
We'll see you on the 22nd, Adam.
I'm planning on being here.
This is the termination agreement with notes live, and, and I want to say this, I talked to a lot of people out in the public who, you know, have talked about this piece of property, and this agreement and what has happened is exactly what is supposed to happen. When someone made requests to change the plan, and staff talked with different council members, and everyone said, no, we don't think that that would be a good idea, then the mechanism is put in place for this to work exactly the way that it was supposed to work. So this was not a backdoor negotiation, this was very clear when we voted on this, that there were stipulations that had to be met, and timelines that had to be met, and if they weren't met, then the agreement could be terminated. And so there's a mutual termination on that agreement. You have that in front of you.
Therefore, I will move for approval.
Second. Motion, second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
You have CIP transfers that are in front of you, are there any questions for Ms. Tucker?
Move up.
We don't have, we don't have to have a move for approval on, on these.
Okay.
All right, we'll move to the Murfreesboro Community Investment Trust annual report.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland, and council members for having me here this morning, allowing me to provide a brief update on the Murfreesboro Community Investment Trust.
Correct.
I, I would like to point out some of the key highlights noted in the annual report provided to you. During fiscal year '24, the trust is fully established pursuant to the city's charter. The trust was established on January 24, 2023, with a balance of 40.8 million, and as of June 30, 2024, the trust balance is 54.3 million. During our initial meeting, the board elected myself, Kevin Gentry, as the chair, and our responsibility is to make operating and investments decisions impacting the trust and direct required distributions from the trust. Additionally, the board adopted its bylaws and key policies that are consistent with maintaining a nonprofit status, including its conflict of interest policy, a whistleblower policy, and record retention policy. As it pertains to investment management, as noted, as noted, the board is responsible for investment of the trust assets. To do this, the board decided to obtain the services of an outside chief investment officer, commonly known as a OCIO. To assist in this critical decision, in May 2023, the board retained the services of Alpha Capital Management. And with assistance of Alpha, the board conducted in-person interviews with three firms and selected Marquette Associates, who has provided OCIO services for more than 35 years. Marquette maintains 82 clients and has 16 billion in assets under management structure. Tim Burdick, CFA, has been assigned to the trust, and as the investment officer, has 34 years of investment experience. Upon retention of the OCIO, the board has adopted an investment policy, which gives us the allowance to invest in a variety of different asset classes, including equities, alternative assets, and fixed income. Marquette developed a strategy to place the investments within the asset classes and actually invest the dollars over a six-month period to mitigate the risk of volatility actually invest the dollars over a six-month period to mitigate the risk of volatility in the market. The policy that was designed seeks a long-term annual return of 7.5%. This level of return allows the trust to grow while dispersing 5% in assets each year. The assets are currently in custody with US Bank. As it pertains to contributions, on February 28, 2023, the committee on contributions held its organizational meeting, and at its initial meeting, elected Carl Montgomery as its chair. The committee's initial grant funding round was FY 2025. During October 2023, however, not-for-profit organizations were invited to submit applications, and 47 were received. Staff reviewed the applications for eligibility and determined three were ineligible for the trust funds. The remaining 44 applications were reviewed by the committee. Most of the applicants had previously been funded as city strategic partners, and total requested funding was approximately 1.2 million. Distributions for fiscal year '25 were 364,950 allocated over 44 applications, and this distribution is 107% of the city's previously dispersed disbursements to charitable organizations. During January of this year, the committee provided its recommendations to the board. The board approved the committee's recommendations and forwarded its determination to the council for review. As for future funding, on July 1, 2024, the city received a payment from Middle Tennessee Electric for 17.2 million, and consistent with the trust agreement, the city will disperse 10.2 million to the trust and retain seven. Hopefully, you've had a good feel for what has been accomplished over the year, and we've met expectations. Indeed, it's been a pretty busy year for the, for the, for the board, and hopefully we've accomplished a lot. And just wanted to say I appreciate your confidence in the board, Craig, and the team for all the assistance they've provided. With that said, are there any questions I can try to answer for you?
Any questions?
Thank you for all your hard work.
Yeah, thanks for the report.
All right, thank you. Appreciate your time. Have a good afternoon.
All right, let's move to wayfinding and signage program update. Sam.
Evening, Mayor McFarland, members of council. Actually, good afternoon, I guess. Wanted to give you an update on the downtown wayfinding. I've got just a couple introductory slides I'll go through, then I'm going to ask Joel Leguiller to come up and do a little more detailed update on the wayfinding program itself. So we're looking here with a little history, you know, in the 1800s, the downtown served as the center of commerce, retail, social, and entertainment for our community. In the 1970s, that really shifted traffic patterns as Interstate 24 was constructed through our community. In the 1980s, and Mr. Vice Mayor Shacklet certainly could fill in a lot of the gaps here, but in the 1980s, that, that impact was obvious in our downtown area. Folks took, took that impact serious and initiated downtown improvements. The Business Improvement District, we adopted the Main Street program, we did some streetscape and lighting and signalization upgrades. In the late 1980s, we completed the design. In the early 1990s, we constructed an open city hall, the Civic Plaza, the library, the parking. We continued to make improvements to the streets and infrastructure in our downtown community. In the 2000s, we did some additional things, the bottoms and highland land use studies, the CCO studies and implementations and expansions, and we've continued in that era to invest in our streets and infrastructures. Currently, you're aware, the Town Creek Project, the pedestrian bridge, those are moving forward. We recently completed the downtown parking and mobility study. We have a project underway, currently a planning study that's looking at the buildings around the square, their utilization, and how we can activate that empty space or those underutilized spaces. The downtown wayfinding is in progress. Joel gives an update on that after I finish this slide, and then we have queued up a design project, a design and study project for this FY to look at the city hall parking garage, to make some recommended upgrades there based on recommendations and results of the downtown parking and mobility study. We'd be glad to talk about any of these today, answer any questions we can on those, but specifically, we wanted to review the downtown wayfinding, and with that, I'll ask Joel to come up and continue the presentation.
Mayor, city council, I'm going to keep this quick. I had a whole song and presentation prepared for this, but I just want to make sure, respect your guys' time, that we keep this quick. This update for you all is just going to be kind of where the work that has gone into this project and kind of updating you all where we're at currently. There's been a lot of different things going on, so I just want to touch real quickly, just give a quick shout out to our consultants, KMA, and also our team. This has really been a team effort working on this project. We have Amelia Grubbs from Community Development, Teresa Stevens from Building and Codes, and Rachel Singer from Parks and Rec. This has really been a group effort to ensure that we're getting a project for you all that's meeting, meeting those original priorities and those elements that we've wanted to accomplish in the downtown. So really appreciate our consultants' effort and our city teams' effort for this project. I'm going to speed by quickly a few things. Again, this purpose for this presentation is to really just update you all on the wayfinding project and show what kind of work we've gotten into to where we're at currently. As you all remember, we did the downtown Neil Schaefer study, that was the parking study that did downtown that Sam just mentioned. The purpose for that study was to look at connectivity, trip generation, parking, how we can manage and make parking better in the downtown. As you all may recall, in 2022, one of the findings for that study was making improvements to the downtown wayfinding and signage in that area and that landscape. And so that was, that's kind of why that was pursued. A lot of people talked about parking, the perception, the lack of parking, and so making those improvements to wayfinding was one of the things that Neil Schaefer identified. And so one of the things we want to touch on is, if you're not familiar with it, what is wayfinding? At its core, wayfinding is getting, is helping people go from point A to point B using words and visuals. You see these a lot of different times in different communities. There are, you know, signs that tell you where, how to get to the library, where the town center is at, where your convention hall may be at, where the parking garage is at. Wayfinding is all around us. It's seen at various levels and different forms. You have pedestrian signage, vehicular signage. You see it at MTSU, you see it at medical campuses, college campuses, downtown areas, parks. They're all around us. And again, really what it's trying to do is lay down that breadcrumb trail. If you start at one point in a park or a college campus or in a downtown, if you start at one portion of the downtown and go from one area to another, you would be able to follow that breadcrumb trail, and that's what wayfinding does. And so the reason for pursuing wayfinding, because as Sam has said, there's been a lot of studies that have been done, conducted in the downtown. They're wanting to, wanting to address and understand how we can encourage more parking in our existing facilities and just be able to meet a lot of the comments that have been made from the public. As city council may be aware, definitely city staff has been aware of it, there's been a lot of times we've heard comments from the public on, you know, the lack of parking or the, again, the perception of it, but also just everyday things from Jimmy John's delivery driver to contractors, to developers, and the people we meet, they have always said, you know, I didn't know there was a parking garage below Civic Plaza. I didn't know that there was a library attached to you all. Even our consultants, when they came down here for their in-person visit from Pittsburgh, they didn't know that Lineball Library was right next to City Hall because there was really no signage for it. And so that was one of the things that if we are able to make that improvement to it, we would be able to establish a signage system that is going to be strategic and cohesive, consistent, uniform, and clear in design, and be able to establish a signage system that was going to be really effective at elevating our existing civic brand in our downtown landscape. So this is, it's in your packet right now as well, but this has been our schedule from it. The contract was approved by city council in 2023, and we have been since moving on, working really well with KMA and our city team. We had a really good kickoff meeting to establish the scope of work. They had their first in-person visit, and at the end of 2023, we really decided, we agreed with our consultants, that we wanted to have some public input with this. We really needed to involve the public with this project. And so we have met many times with them over this project, met three times, and did a lot of informal discussions with them for this project, and they were very instrumental. They were very instrumental into how we were engaging the public and getting that feedback. And we wanted to get members of the public that have worked in or around the downtown, we wanted to ensure that we were capturing their feedback because they have seen the existing constraints of the downtown. They understand a lot of the patterns they've seen. They've seen a lot of the different growth and different types of energies that have been coming into the downtown. And so we wanted to be able to tap their experience, their insight, and fold them into this process. And so we were able to get members from Main Street, MTSU, downtown business owners, our friends at the county, and as well as other city employees to be involved in this, so we could get their input on what this design for the wayfinding should be. And additionally, on top of that, as you saw with the schedule, we did a public survey with this. This public survey was very instrumental as well. We got 753 respondents to the survey. KMA usually says they typically see with cities around no more than 200. But Murfreesboro really knocked out of the park, and we got 753 respondents. That's a huge chunk of input for this project. And I just included a screenshot real quick just to show and go over what those results or what are the questions were, and it was clear from the public that the priorities from the public, from the 753 respondents that took part in this survey, they wanted a, they wanted a sign of system that was going to be clear and readable, that was going to have important information so they could get to their destination on the downtown, and that it was going to have some sort of aesthetic appeal, and that was really looking at a design that was traditional, classic, artistic. But with 753 respondents from the public, it was clear what our direction was and what we should be looking at when crafting this wayfinding signage package. For the rest of this year, in 2024, we had some really great work. Each month, we met with KMA to look over the first draft of design, look at the location messaging plan. They had multiple drafts updated as we continued to work and get that feedback from the stakeholder committee as well as from city council. And in April 2024, we had an internal meeting to discuss, between the departments, to discuss opportunities and get that feedback. It was really important for us to fold in transportation, engineering, Parks and Rec, and everyone into this because we wanted to ensure we were maximizing all opportunities with the other departments. As Sam has said, we have Town Creek, Keystone on Broad, we have the pedestrian bridge. We wanted to be sure that this wayfinding project was not going to conflict with any other projects we had that were ongoing, and so we met to discuss, and that was a very productive meeting. And so during, in the beginning of the summer, we had some other designs that was drafted for it. We met, the city and TDOT met with KMA to just discuss that process of any signage that would be on Northwest Broad Street, and that's kind of where we are today. Right now, we've landed on a new recent draft, and again, the current status of this project is, you know, we're getting to the final stages of it, we're getting to the late-ending part of Phase 2, where we're finally getting the location messaging plan finalized, we're getting the package together. This is not a comprehensive list of all the signs. I've only shown where three of the gateway signages would be and three of the secondary signages would be, and those important access points in the downtown. But in total, right now, the package is proposing 130 total signs. And again, these are various types. These are gateway signages, vehicular directional signage, pedestrian signage, and parking directional. This is the part of the signage package that we think, again, is really important because it will lead to those existing facilities and amenities that we're really trying to get to, and that, again, was an original priority for council and the public to ensure that we're, again, we're getting people to the parking garages, we're getting people to the other, other civic amenities and facilities that they need to get to. And so where we at right now is, we have gotten a lot of feedback, both from our informal polling between the stakeholder committee and the public and other departments, as well as from city council. We have gotten additional feedback on the design, and so we've kind of challenged KMA to address that. They've addressed the height of the signage, the M, and incorporated more of the city logo to enhance that current civic brand, and this is the draft that has come before you all. We've really, again, tasked KMA with trying to narrow it down so that we could, again, meet those comments met by our stakeholders and those comments made by city council. But because of, because of where we're at right now, we really, really need to establish the direction moving forward as what design you all prefer. With these four processes, we will be able to determine the gateway signage and be able to move forward, and the rest of the programming for this project, because as I said, there's 130 total signs. With an established direction for this sign, we can then move forward into the rest of the design and get into that construction phase for it. And that's what I want to really stress with city council is, you know, this is not the end of the process, this is an update to you all and to get that direction, because once we have that direction on this signage design, we can move forward with the final program and bring you all the final packages of what that looks like. And so with the remainder of my presentation, I just want to be able to open that to you all and discuss that today because these are the final four. Again, with the informal polling that we've done between our stakeholder committee, the original design, the number two option with the M and everything, we've narrowed it down to really two choices, two and three. As you all know, we gave you all a kind of an anonymous poll to see which ones you prefer, and it was really a toss-up between two and three. And so if we have that time now to open up the floor for discussion, we'd like to get some additional feedback on you on which options you prefer so that the team can go back and task KMA with making any additional modifications. Thank you.
Well, two with the big M, I automatically think of Maxwell, but that wouldn't be fair to everybody.
I mean, it's just very convenient, you know, insignia, insignia for you, Mr. Maxwell.
Madeline likes it too, she thinks of Madeline. But I want to go with three, I just like three personally.
I like three, too. Three as well. Three.
I like three, too.
Three as well.
I'm voting none of the above. I'm going to go with, Darren, we've, we met with Sarah Callender a couple of weeks ago, and Joe, I don't mean that as a negative, but Sarah's concerned, and I think, tell me if I'm wrong, Darren, but she was like, you know, hey, most people don't necessarily know what the rotunda is for downtown when they come downtown, you know. My first thought of is what's the first thing you think of about Murfreesboro downtown?
Courthouse.
It's the courthouse, but then, you know, the county's not paying for it, so, but that's what you think about, and so that led into a larger discussion on, you know, if you go to the city of Charlotte, they've branded everything with their.
With the crown, I think.
With the crown.
The Queen City, yeah.
And so it really makes us to think, what is our brand as a city? And that really gets into a larger discussion on, as we're talking about wayfinding, but, you know, we, as a city, we do have our brand as the city rotunda, but does that make sense for downtown Murfreesboro? I mean, what, bringing folks here, what is our, what is our brand? And when somebody pulls up to Murfreesboro downtown, I know what the rotunda is, but most people are not going to know what the rotunda is.
I wouldn't have known what the crown is.
What?
I wouldn't have known what the crown was in Charlotte, though.
Well, I mean, it's the Queen City, they talk about Queen Charlotte, and, you know, that's really what their, or the Bs that you see around the city, so it's just a. I'm fine with three, but we just need to know that we're committing to a rotunda that's going to be the brand of the city of Murfreesboro from, from here on out.
Let me ask you this, the courthouse may be a county building, but it's still the very center of downtown of what everybody thinks about. Is there a problem with us branding it courthouse?
Sam.
So just, just a couple of thoughts on the, on the rotunda. And Mayor, you and I chatted about the Charlotte example, and so we took that direction, and then we also noticed that we have used the rotunda on branding. This really dates back to 2012 when we did the 200-year celebration of the city of Murfreesboro, and we, we had the old gold embossed city of Murfreesboro seal as, as everything we put on letterhead and official documents and all of that, and so there was an effort to, to, they came up with the blue rotunda logo as something that we adopted in 2012. And since that time, we've added it to our vehicles, to a lot of our letterhead, to some of our signage.
It's right here in front of us.
It's right in front of us. The other thing I would say is that for, for the, the new visitor downtown, they're really probably not going to appreciate the clock tower off of the courthouse or the rotunda because that may not mean anything to a new visitor. And this wayfinding signage is really intended for that occasional visitor or new visitor to downtown. For those of us who routinely drive and work and visit in the downtown, these signs become background to us, and so the, you know, the purpose will be out there. So we took it to the direction of trying to brand with the city logo, and what I would also say to you is that in this design, we asked the sign company or the sign designers to make sure that, that some of these elements were replaceable for weather and wear and tear, and if we choose to change some, for some reason, a main element on this sign, there'd be a modular design that would allow us to change out a sign panel and not completely rebuild a brick and stone masonry sign. So we thought through some of those things, and having something that has the test of time, but also having the possibility that things change over time.
What is the, the rotunda, it, what is the material there? Is there any color involved, or is?
Well, that's actually a shaded grayscale is what we're doing there. We added some color in some of the early models, and it really didn't give us the sort of traditional downtown historic feel, it gave it more of a modern feel, and, and our, you know, our feedback from our stakeholder committee, our staff, and then also the folks from the sign consultant led us to, away from color and to go back maybe to the, to the more typical things you might see in signage from earlier times.
The darker, the darker depiction that's on there makes it harder even to find that that's the rotunda. It's the only thing I was thinking.
Yes, well, we, we didn't want to make it, we tried not to make it too over the top with lights and, you know, and color and flash, but just a subtle branding is what we were going for there. The real thing that we're trying to use, and these, this, this, we would have three signs like this, as Joel pointed out, these are our entry feature signs. The real thing that we're wanting to emphasize with this sign is that you're entering the downtown district or you're in the downtown area, so it's an announcement of an arrival sign, and it would be visible in those three locations to drive-by traffic. So I'm not sure how much of the detail might be picked up there.
I will, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
There are folks that are here in town that have said to me they've literally never been downtown, and so I can see where, you know, I see. And so I can see where, you know, I see the rotunda. I'm up on the square a lot. I think we all have seen it and we recognize it. But I'm thinking about the person that's on the west side of town. Is it, is it better to have two? You know, because, I mean, or is it better, to your point, Sean, to have the courthouse, you know, the clock tower? And I like three, but I'm also thinking about the person, it's like, okay, what the heck is that? Is that like a museum, a Parthenon, you know, that rotunda? Because there will be some that say that.
I didn't know there was a choice of none of the above. I was just going by what was the four on the choice.
The logo, the, the logo doesn't have to define us. We define the logo, right? Like, you don't look at the Walmart logo and think, well, I don't look at that and see Walmart anywhere. No, it's just the Walmart logo. I mean, it's-
And you can start promoting the rotunda, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I mean-
I think the third one, why is it that we can't use the brand that we got here with the white coloring? I think it's, I think this looks better than what's up there on three.
I like, um-
I'm talking about, I'm talking about right here.
So I can speak to that a little bit. Sam was talking about there and that, the design. That fourth draft did have that, Councilman, it did have that. But when we were looking at the vehicular signage and everything, because of the, that, that small lettering in the logo for it, when you're going 40 miles per hour, you would not see that. And so the, the clutter of it-
You're being generous to think that everybody around here drives 40 miles an hour, so, first of all.
That was around the square.
Yeah.
Not on Old Ford Parkway at Ford Park.
But, but that was the reason why they did. There was a design for that, but we looked at it, and during our analysis with the location messaging, it was just determined, the consultants believed that it just would not be feasible and would not really speak to our true priority of making clear and efficient signage.
What did Main Street want? The Main Street, I'm just curious.
So Main Street, during our conversations with them, the original design derived from number two. We had three options. There was the one option that was just a little bit, that was just bland. They had another option that just looked too much like the Avenue. And so when we brought in those individuals from the Stakeholder Committee and Main Street including, they all wanted a design that spoke to it. And they agreed that it's kind of hard to pinpoint one exact symbol or brand of the downtown because you have so many iconic buildings that are downtown. And so when we saw the M, that was agreed upon, it may not be perfect, but at least it was the preferred one because it stood for M. It stood for Murphysboro. And kind of like, exactly like how Councilman Mavrow water said it, Murphysboro could run with that imagination and make it to whatever it wanted to be. It was derived from an example as Franklin. If you've been to sometimes in some of Franklin's corridors, you see the F that's on their brick. And so that was kind of one example as to what that was. And so again, there was an agreement that there was, there could have been maybe a better, more symbolic brand or icon to do that. But with the M, we could at least run with that imagination and do that. We could be able to expand upon it further, especially if we wanted to expand our wayfinding program to other parts of the cities on later phases. But that's what kind of Main Street and our Stakeholder Committee came for.
When you, when I took the, the, you did a online, uh, I guess, poll, you know, I think I voted for two. But the, the other thought is you might use a different font, you know, i- if you wanted to, to have it, like you say, more descriptive or more script or something like that. But, but the M allows you to have a little bit more flexibility on how you go from there. And it is, I mean, nobody's going to doubt, why is the M there? What is that?
It's Maxwell.
Of course it's there, so.
Farland.
McFarland.
And Madeline.
Conflict, that's a conflict of interest.
Vote for this before the 22nd.
I have a question about the-
I'm abstaining from this vote.
I have a question on the 753. Were those all city residents? Was it a mixture of city and people from out of town? Was there any fact finding about where the people were responding? Is it 500 people from the same family on the same computer? I mean, what, what, what is the, the statistics on this poll?
No, that's a good, that's, that's a good question. You know, when we did the survey, we asked for that information to make sure that, again, you weren't doing it. You were only allowed to take it once, on the device you did it. So of course, there is that kind of discrepancy. If you have three phones, then, okay, you know, that's cool that you got three phones. I wish I had three phones. I only got two.
No, you don't.
City only gave me two. Um, the, but what we looked at was, there was a question is, were you a resident, you know, and all that? So we mainly got respondents from residents. There was questions of, as well as, were you a business owner or anything like that? Were you a visitor? And what we found of, with the survey, that mainly more of the respondents were current residents. We did get, I think, a, a, a number in there for visitors. It wasn't very significant. I think it was probably about like eight or 10%, but it was a majority of current residents.
We also used some of our stakeholder groups to push that out. So we used Main Street, Rutherford County Chamber. We engaged with our Plan Commission and, um, and city, and, uh, city employees, uh, to help get a, a good sample of population back from there.
I would like to see what, whichever one we choose to design from number one, whether you have the dip and not be so, you know, number three is my choice, but it looks too common. I like how you have the design where the signage is in the center and you have the circular. I like that. That's different.
What if you took two and three and merged them? You've got a rotunda, then you've got a big M on top of it. I mean, it's grown now, but-
We could put the M in the middle of the rotunda and be like Superman.
Superman.
We're certainly going to, we're, we're listening, and we'll, we'll certainly take any action you need to here, including a couple of different-
Can we just do another vote?
Can I ask this?
Sure.
Since, since the council has, since the council, it sounds like we've narrowed it down between two and three. Could we, could we push that back out to that group who responded and say, and get sort of a poll from those groups and say, okay, here's the ones that the council has narrowed down between two and three? Send back which one you want, and then you can let us know, here's what the, all the downtown organizations and-
Our stakeholder groups, we can, we can certainly do that.
Can, can we add a third option, going back to what Kurt said? Just for synergy reasons, why don't we put our logo across the whole, I mean, instead of having these indentions and stuff, just put our logo, if it's interchangeable anyway, and we can go back and change it and put something else out there, make a third choice with the city logo on it for synergy purposes?
It's a good point. Very good point. Because it is consistent.
I mean, if that's what all of our, our rovers have it, all of our logos, all of our letterhead, our website, everything's got that logo on it, why would we not put our logo on the signs? I think that's what you were saying, Kurt.
Thank you, Sean.
Yeah.
That's what I was saying.
Easy enough. Joel, did we have anything else in the presentation? I think we got some direction. We will, before we send that out for public consumption, we'll recirculate, um, a rendition of the, of that, Sean and Kurt, we'll, we'll recirculate that. We'll do it with color, um, so you can see that with the letters or without the letters. We can do a couple of different ways. And, and we'll, we'll send you a proof of that around, see, see how you still feel about it, if you want to include it in some additional work. Easy enough to do.
All right.
All right.
Thank you all for your, Joel, thanks for your hard work. All right, let's move to this CUD and City General Waterline Relocation Agreement. Darren.
Yeah, I got one. Did you close me out? It's okay. Here it is. Got it. All right. Thought I'd liven up the party by giving everybody a depreciation schedule. Just, just as a joke, sort of. We didn't land very well, but it was supposed to be a good joke.
That's true.
This is something that we've spent a couple of years on. You all are seeing it for the first time. I'm not asking you to vote on it today. I'd just like you to, 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 uh, think on it, and we'll probably bring it up again at the 22nd council meeting. We've had a long history now that, uh, of building roads outside city limits. We can talk about Veterans Parkway being a great example, that required a lot of utility, you know, roads are utility corridors. So CUD, uh, has a large water line that parallels Veterans Parkway. But now, as we get into more county roads in CUD's territory, that we're improving, as the city's annexed, of course, we have relocation issues. As we're widening roads, there could be old CUD water lines that we need to relocate. In the past, what we have done is paid for all the engineering costs for redesigning the relocation and paid for all the relocation costs. This agreement, and that, and that just didn't seem fair. Especially if you had an old 30, a 30-year or 40-year-old PVC line, and we're, the city is paying 100% replacement value of, say, a ductile iron line. So what this agreement does is it effectively caps the engineering that the city would reimburse CUD. It would also cap, uh, if we do acquire or have to move into some of their easements, that we would reimburse them for their, their booked value of the easements, plus some inflationary costs. We would afford them a easement effectively inside the city's road right-of-way, where they could come in and make emergency repairs or maintain their water lines, and then the city would come back and make the, the permanent repair. But the biggest, uh, component of this is following this depreciation schedule. This does have a, a time value of money element to it, so you can see, they depreciate their, their pipelines over 40 years. So if they had a 40-year, uh, fully depreciated asset, you know, roadway widening, they would pay for 80, basically 89% of that replacement cost, but the city would pay for that 11% of cost share. So this just, again, goes in as we move into CUD's territory with the city road improvements that we just follow a depreciation schedule on, on cost sharing for, for road, or for their water line replacements. I'm open for questions. Again, this is just to introduce you to the topic since it's new. Everybody, I think, is, appreciates it from the standpoint of, we will be following a protocol now versus having to arm wrestle on every road project with CUD. I know that Roger Goodson is preparing to take this to his, his, uh, CUD board at the end of this month. So as far as staff, I felt like some staff agreed to everything. It would be very important to put it in front of you all to make sure that you're okay with it as well, so.
What's the age of the asset? How are you defining that?
It's, it's the install date. I mean, once it's put into service. So they, they have a depreciation, I mean, they have fixed assets like we do, and, and they follow a 40, uh, I talked with them on the front end, they follow, at the end of 40 years, they, they depreciate that value to zero.
Any questions for Darren? Darren, thanks for sending this.
Sure.
We're going to move to reorganization of city courts.
Sir, um-
Darren, before you start this, I want to give everyone just sort of a, a background. You know, over the last two or three years, we've talked about, really longer than that, we've talked about our municipal court, and, you know, at budget, we talked about, you know, looking at the possibility to go full-time. And Darren, Vicky Ordones, who is our chief court clerk, reached out. And so Darren and I met with Vicky because Vicky had some suggestions and really wanted to talk about a few things. And so I'm going to take responsibility that, you know, that was really a discussion that would have been good to have with her prior to our budget. And Vicky gave lots of good input, which, um, brought about this discussion on where we are now with what's being presented and sort of where we've been, and also the work that Vicky and her team do at, at City Court. So what's being presented is really more of, uh, discussions that have taken place outside of that initial meeting with Vicky that I had and with Darren, but with, um, with our team and, and maybe what's a good, a good way to look at the restructuring of the court.
Right, again, this is not an action item that we're asking you to take. It's more of just an introduction, uh, and discussion item. What we, in talking with, with Vicky, we found out, we, we had actually posted, I think for a full-time judge position, uh, when we, when we sat down and talked with Vicky, we realized, based on her workload and what she does at City Courts, she felt like there may not be enough workload for a full-time city judge. So that caused us to pull the, pull the, uh, the full-time judge job advertisement and kind of rethink how we could, could, again, optimize, uh, the efficiency of the courts. Of course, Vicky, Vicky, Vicky runs, she kind of runs the joint. So we just wanted to make sure that we were thoughtful about this moving forward. Again, kind of a second compelling factor was that, um, if we do go to a part-time, uh, city judge, that we would have kind of an employment agreement, a contract with the City Council that would entail more commensurate benefits for a part-time, uh, city judge position. So again, Judge Ewing Sellers is our current judge, and he does work two days a week. The benefits package he receives is, is, is more robust than what a part-time, uh, judge would receive, we believe, uh, in commensurate for that type of work. So we wanted to bring this to you. We looked at, uh, putting City Court, uh, having that as a direct report to Sam, uh, Assistant City Manager. And again, there would be a, a dashed line where the City Court Clerk would have to, would also provide those support services for the city judge. What we, assuming that you all are okay with this type of organ, reorganization, what we'd like to do is have legal put together a sample or a template employment agreement for you all to consider before we put out a jo, a, a job advertisement for a part-time judge. So that you all, because at this point, it would be, I don't believe Judge Sellers has an employment agreement with the council. I believe that's, that's important, but I believe you all need to sign off on the basic terms and conditions of that type of agreement before we re-advertise for a part-time judge position.
And to give you the rationale, Darren and his team have worked on this as well. Right now, the city court, the city council is directly responsible for the city court. But, for example, when Vicky reached out to meet with, with me, Vicky does not work for the mayor and the council. Vicky works for Judge Sellers, who answers to the city council. So, you know, I didn't, I, I responded back to Vicky. Vicky and I met, but I asked Darren to be there because Vicky doesn't work for the council. So with that being said, the judge is responsible for the budgeting and running the day-to-day operations of the department. But the way that we currently have that set up, the judge is a part-time position that works two days a week. And so I'm not saying there's anything negative towards Judge Sellers. This is just the way the department's set up. So ultimately, you have a full-time city clerk that manages the day-to-day operations of that entire department, but does not answer to the city council, but answers to a part-time judge. So you can see how tough that is for budgeting and reporting and oversight when that full-time employee is answering to a part-term, part-time person who then answers to a city council who is part-time as well. So the thought process came up. So for example, like, you know, I don't think it's our, the city council's responsibility to be looking at budgeting and ticket writing, for example, or collections. You know, we, we're not involved in that. Vicky and her team are involved with that. And the legal, Jamie knows this, but the legalities of a judge, also looking at the oversight of tickets and budgeting and those things, there, there's a, an issue with that. So it made a lot of sense to have that court clerk position almost be their own department head who are over those individual employees. And they're really working with the part-time judge, whose sole purpose is just to come in and hear cases. That's it. Not to manage the budget, not to determine pay raises, not to determine all those things. That would be done at the administrative level. And so the city council would be responsible, really making sure the employment agreement with the judge, that the judge is showing up, that the judge is doing everything that they're supposed to do in getting that to the court clerk. And then the overstr, oversight with the budgeting and the administrative positions would be done by the city team, which gives a little better accountability to the taxpayer to make sure that the department is run correctly and efficiently. And then the judge's position is really just to adjudicate the cases that are in front of those positions. For example, one of the things we talked about, and, and, and I hope Darren will, is putting all the- For example, one of the things we talked about, and I hope Darren is putting all this data together, but, for example, looking at, you know, what happens if a police officer is scheduled to be in court but doesn't show up for court? And then that case either gets dismissed or gets pushed. Well, right now, there's no administrative oversight for someone to be able to say, hey, this police officer didn't show up. And so that gives them, the staff, the ability to be able to handle and manage those things. So there's a lot of different things that Darren, if, as you see this, that please get with him, that he can give you a lot of different information that Vicky has also shared, but it really takes the administrative role out of the council's hands and lets that administrative role get managed by the management team. And our focus is to find a part-time person to hear and adjudicate the cases that come to the court. Because I can tell you, after the years of doing this, I've probably had four conversations with Judge Sellers, and it's got this vacuum right now that no one really knows who that department answers to. I mean, we know who it answers to, but as far as budgeting and if there's an issue, who do they, who do they go to? Judge Sellers, the city manager? It's this like dual role right now that poses some issues.
So are we looking at, since Judge Sellers is two days, are we looking, do we have the volume to put another part-time judge or just?
Yeah. I want to be delicate how I say this. I mean, if Judge, if we come up with what the pay is for a part-time position, then I think it would be fair if Judge Sellers wanted to continue with that role at that, what a fair part-time position is. But currently, in my opinion, what is currently structured and what was set up in the nineties and that has gone through is not commensurate with what a part-time position is situated. And I'm saying that from the taxpayer's standpoint. I mean, to my knowledge, we don't have any part-time positions that are receiving full retirement, full sick and vacation, full healthcare, all of those things. So I think we need to make sure that, you know, in my opinion, that money that we save needs to go to the staff who are running the day-to-day operations of that department. And that, but that needs to be determined from our team who look and say, yeah, this department head position is way too low. So that really needs to be hashed out from HR or our employee services to really say, this is what needs to happen. And I also think there needs to be, getting into this, some better coordination with the court and our police department to make sure that that synergy is working, working well at the same time.
Is there just one employee to the city judge? Is there just one?
Yes, sir. That's anticipated to be one, yes.
Does it require any charter changes as far as, since that's one of the five?
No.
Restructure that salary or anything? We don't have to change?
That is not in the charter. It spells out the roles and duties of the judge. It says the judge is appointed by City Council. The judge can be removed by City Council. But in terms of, terms of-
Job description or?
I mean, job description, there is a job description with respect to overseeing the court and having certain responsibilities with respect to the court, but it does not go down, the charter provisions do not go down into the type of work that the city, or the court clerk does. There's not, there's a distinction and-
I think that line between city judge and the city court administrator, whatever that's defined as, is going to be critical though, because you're saying they still have a relationship, but their real account, their authority is Assistant City Manager, so.
Well, right. And I think, again, that's, those are some of the details to work through, but I think Vicky knows, she knows the administration of the City Courts. And I think there's been a disconnect to some degree, and I think Vicky's been isolated. We want to bring her more integrated into the city's leadership and management style and make sure, and again, Sam would lead maybe those, building those bridges between courts and police and just bolstering their integration into our overall efficiency and effectiveness. And so I think we can, we can, if it means going through and modifying the job description of the court clerk, we can do that, too. That would probably be appropriate, honestly, with this restructuring.
There's not a contract, so is the timeframe for implementing something like this? What's the timeframe?
There's really no timeframe that I'm aware of. I don't believe Judge Sellers is, I mean, I think this is more of an initiative that, you know, I've taken on and it's been talked about for some time. So we can go through this in a fairly slow, you know, we don't have to fast-track it. But I do think getting an employment agreement in front of you all that Judge Sellers would be able to read and to see and react to. And if we see that there's a need to advertise for the position, that other applicants would read and react to, to see if that would be compelling or for them to come in and apply for that position. I just think it's important for you all to frame up that city judge role and the benefits and the pay that you all believe in. And we'll research that. We'll find other cities that are maybe doing this under a contract basis and give you guys recommendations.
Have we had people respond to the full-time?
I don't know, Randolph, if we had any applicants on the first, and when we advertised for the judge position on the-
We did.
You did?
Bill, I think the issue, you know, and I take responsibility for this because it really, we should have talked about it more during budget, but, you know, one, I want to be clear, Vicky Ordones does a fantastic job managing that court system. But I think after meeting with her and listening and looking at the data that she has sent, and Darren will share this, I don't think it's a, this is probably the best forum to share that, but really, a lot of the data on citations and some of those things, it really became apparent that, you know, paying, we almost were going to be double paying a judge to run what Vicky already runs. And, you know, I think that would need to be another discussion with Darren on that department head pay and what that current position makes and the amount of work that that position does right now. And then looking at what the judge, that, those roles are, that, I mean, it became apparent that, you know, Vicky is running, and I don't want to make it about the individual, but the court clerk is running a full-time department with a part-time supervisor. And that's just the way we've set it up over the years. I mean, that, so this is nothing towards Judge Seller, but, you know, judge is there two days a week and she's running a department that she's there five days a week.
So Shane, it sounds like they just had no oversight.
I don't want to say they don't have oversight.
Or very limited oversight.
Well, I mean, as much as a part-time position can-
So let me ask you this. How long has Judge Sellers been working? Two days?
I mean, that was a deal that was set up in the nineties. I mean, with, with Mr. Haley, so.
It was nineteen eighty, nineteen eighty-eight, eight, nine, or ninety, it was in that time.
So what's, what's his salary?
Tell me, it's, it's, the part-time position pays ninety-eight thousand dollars a year plus benefits, so I want to say the overall package is about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year is what that position is paid.
So that goes back to where we were talking about earlier. There has to, we have to have discussions about things of this nature. We can't kick the can down the road. Sounds like this hadn't been, the can hadn't been picked up. Because I, this is the first time I've heard of this. I've been on the council for eight years. So I think this is something that needs to be discussed and needs to be discussed pretty soon.
Want to talk about it at the retreat?
Too much stuff on the agenda for the retreat.
What I'd recommend for council members, if you'll, again, I'm trying to be delicate that the way, you know, I think our city has progressed and, you know, deals that were made back years and years ago, these are just tough discussions that we have to make. But I think, I've not talked to one person who doesn't agree that, you know, that part-time position is, that's a very good package for a part-time position. And so I think what we really need to look at is the overall management, where those funds need to be allocated for the person running the department. And then have, the council has the oversight moving forward of who that person is that comes in and hears and adjudicates the cases. And that's really the council's responsibility of putting that position in place. And then budgeting and all those other things really needs to be handled more at the professional and staff level and reward those individuals who are running that department on a daily basis.
Is it going to a two-day, three-day?
It's already, it's a two-day right now.
Two-day now, but to Kurt or Bill's point, this was created in the late eighties, early nineties, and as a city, we have to have, I would only assume the workload or pace has increased, whereas it's still a two-day position is what I'm getting at.
I think that would be a great opportunity for you to talk to Darren about that, because I, you know, the more that we've gotten into it, and I think because we need that management oversight over that department, I think Darren can give you some really good information on maybe what he has seen once he's gotten into it. And I'm not trying to speak for you. I'm just, I don't want to put you in a position that, I mean, I'll take responsibility for this. I don't want to put you in a position that, you know-
Again, I've said this, too. It's a data-driven decision. Talking with Vicky, she is, gave us heaps of data, of citations, and I've got trends I can share with you. I need to share those with the police department as well. But right now, it does not warrant more than a two, it does, it does not warrant a full-time position. That's when we had to regroup. And really, Vicky runs a department. I mean, she is a department head. But having that full-time connected supervision, if you will, on really administrative functions. So this, this is, I don't want to call it not a big deal. It's not that big, it may be a big deal for Judge Sellers, but it's not so much, I think it'll bring Vicky back into more integrated with the organization. I think that the part-time judge will be, will be more clearly defined role for him. And I think we'll just see some, or her, I'm sorry, we'll just see some enhanced efficiencies as we go forward.
But and also the reason I think this is very delicate, because the last thing the City Council needs to be up here reviewing is citations issued and, you know, because then, you know, everyone in the public thinks that, you know, municipalities have quotas out there for, and we don't, we don't do that. But when the City Council starts looking at month-to-month data on citations and those things, that's not what we need to be getting into. That really needs to be a decision that's at the administrative level, where that coordination is talked about. Because, you know, you would anticipate that as population increases. So those are all things that, you know, when, when Vicky had sat down with us and had asked about, well, can you show us the data on, you know, does this warrant that position? And so she sent a lot of information that I think would be beneficial, that, you know, some of that I think is protected information, that you want to be careful with that. But like, I have no doubt, and after Aaron and listening to everyone, that that department needs to have the supervision, supervision of the full-time city staff and then the City Council put whatever, you know, we look and we say, look, it's an hourly rate for the judge, a judge to come in on a two-day-a-week basis or whatever that is, then there's a really good way to be able to handle it.
What do judges usually make an hour? You know, Jamie, what judges usually make an hour? Ballpark?
I mean, depending on what type of judge they are, they may have a five-day-a-week docket or a two-day-a-week docket. I mean, it's really, it's not uniform. They all make, you know, six-figure salaries, low to mid-six figures.
But most judges are elected, too, right? Either elected or appointed.
Yeah, and those are your elected judges.
And they can't have a private practice.
Yeah, and that's the other thing that I was telling the mayor, you know, when you, there's a judicial canon that prohibits people who are judging full-time from having a private practice. So I think Ewing is exempt from that technically, because he still maintains a private practice. And I looked into that. But I think if we did bring in a full-time judge, we would have to consider the fact that we'd be asking them to give up their practice. So I think you're more likely to get, to be a good steward of the taxpayer money, I think you're more likely to convince an attorney to do it for a reasonable price if they get to maintain their law practice.
And I'm, you know, right now, we have, so if Judge Sellers is out of town or sick or there's a, you know, for example, for council member, I remember I got a speeding ticket one time and I showed up to court as a council member and Judge Sellers said, you're my council member, I can't hear this case. And so I had to, he had to get, bring in a guest judge at some point. So I think there's a track record out there that if we needed to, if we, and by the way, council members do get speeding tickets. So if we, if we need to bring in a guest judge, there may be something that the council looks at this and says, hey, we want to put a slate of three or four attorneys out there that we have on a rotation that may come in and hear these. There's all kinds of opportunities that I think the council can talk about, that you may have some younger attorneys that may have five to seven years' experience and they want to come in and sit and do that. So it really is more about the process of what happens once the judge hears it and then it goes into, into the, Vicky's office is really what we're talking about managing. We get the easy part of just picking the person that is the, that funnels that process. So here's what I'd ask you. You've got the information, you've heard me talk about it. Between now and, you know, the next month or so, I mean, we hate to leave Judge Sellers sort of hanging out there in limbo. I think it would be great to let Employee Services come up with what that, that pay scale will be for a part-time position, looking at other municipalities, and then let's make a decision on how we want to restructure and then determine if, you know, we want to offer that to Judge Sellers to, wants to do it two days a week, clearly with a different program than what we have right now, or if we need to open that up to, but between now and then, maybe talk to Darren and ask questions. And Aaron has been instrumental in working on this as well, so she can give you some, some information as well. Is that good, Darren?
Yes, sir.
I just want to give all of council the benefit of some of the information that I just shared with Bill. And first of all, this is, this is not changing who, you know, appoints and hires the City Court Clerk. Under the existing charter, the city judge does not appoint the clerk. The clerk, like all other employees, except those five that are appointed by City Council, are appointed by city manager. So this is, this is actually, makes that clearer and is consistent with the charter.
Yes.
And, but of course, the judge and the clerk are going to have to work closely to run a court, but this is-
That's one of the things that we really researched and found, that it creates this, it's like the city attorney. It's almost a dual role that is hired by the City Council, but really, the city attorney also works instrumentally with the city manager. So it's, there's a better way to clean this up from getting into this. And again, I take responsibility that should have really gotten into this a little more, but you really, until you open it up, you find all of it. So, all right, let's move to reorg, another reorganization of the Tax and Finance Department.
Okay. Mayor, council, again, thank you. This is kind of the large-scale version. We've been talking with Ms. Erin Tucker, and you all have had an opportunity to talk with her as well about taking on a city recorder, city treasurer position. I'm going to dive down into what that looks like in a little more detail. In the past, that city recorder has also worked as city finance director. When we went through- When we went through our discussions with Aaron and kind of just having worked with that finance director reporting directly to the council, it just, and, and Aaron acting as budget director, it seemed as though there was just some, some less efficient means to accomplish the outcomes that we wanted as, as a, as a city. And we talked to Aaron. Aaron really kind of came up with a lot of this, where that if that finance director reported to the city recorder, also the city clerk, and I want to stop here real quick and introduce Ms. Melanie Peterson. I don't know if anybody has, if she's been formally introduced, but.
No, I don't think so.
Melanie Peterson is our new city clerk. I'm sure, and you've seen her. And of course, Aaron works as the pension trust.
Go ahead, the chair of the pension.
Chair of the pension trust. And of course, right now, she's our budget director, and she would still maintain that budget director position. The finance, I think we've talked with both of the assistant finance directors, who, who may be qualified to take the finance, the, the finance director position, but at this point in time are not necessarily wanting to take on that, that level of responsibility as the, as a full-time finance director. So that would be someone that we would need to seek as an outside candidate. And we all know, again, seeking outside candidates that aren't necessarily familiar with the culture and the, the, the protocols and policies and procedures inside the city, Aaron is very familiar with that. So if we, putting a finance director underneath her charge, she would be able to mentor and train and equip that finance director. Of course, the assistant directors would basically be training that person as well. And you can kind of see how the, that structure of the GL accounting, accounts payable, the debt and CIP, fixed assets, and so on, how that organizationally works out. So what we would, this is, while this is a workshop item, I, I do have an action item on here that I would request that the, the council approve legal and engaging Mrs. Tucker to negotiate an employment contract for her to take on that city recorder and city treasurer role. We can open it up for questions right now, but that is the ultimate ask.
I will make a motion.
Second, I probably second two ladies.
Before we take a motion, I.
She's staff, by the way.
I will say this.
He's a lady.
We want to say this, I do publicly. Aaron took over the budgeting coordinator position after being Melissa Wright's second-in-charge. And Aaron, over the last four years.
Five.
Five years.
Yep.
Has taken the budget to a new level. And so after, you know, a lot of this hashing out, everything happens for a reason, and you see how this restructuring takes place, and I don't think the city could be in better financial hands than Aaron leading that department. So we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
That's a conflict of, that's a conflict.
Awesome, should I have her do it?
A conflict of interest. We need to, Ms. Tucker, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater, Ms. Scales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklett.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, do we have any questions on the June dashboard? Okay, let's move to, we don't have any board and commission appointments. We do have a certificate of good moral character for the Murfreesboro Moose Lodge, number 645. This is an ownership change. Any questions?
Does that move?
A second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Scales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklett.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Any statements? I skipped over that. Any other business from staff members?
Mr. Mayor.
Any other business from council? Mr. Wade.
Yes. Sorry about that, my phone is ringing. So we just finished a very tough, tough election. Honored to be back on, what'd you say, Jamie?
Yeah.
Yeah. Honored to be back on the council, to continue to serve everybody and conserve, serve this community. And I want to make note that I've always tried to do the right thing, and we got a nonpartisan race, but we have individuals that keep trying to turn this race to partisan. And that's okay. But as an elected official, and you are chairman of a political party, I don't care what that political party is. That party could be Democrat, Republican, Independent, it doesn't really matter. I feel, and this is just my opinion, that we all should think about that when we take office, because our, our opinions should be what's best for Murfreesboro. Not one side or other. I've said it before, and I think I've said it again, if I'm an elected official, I should only be thinking about what's best for Murfreesboro. When we talk about ethics, we need to be doing some kind of research, Mr. Tucker, how does that fall into play? Because what I'd like to see is, if you're an elected official in a nonpartisan race, you should not be chair of any party. Can you do some research on that?
I can.
Okay. Thank you.
So, so you're saying, being chair of any party, that that person should not be allowed to even run for city council?
No, no, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is this, if you're an elected official, you shouldn't be a chair of any political party, Democrat, Republican, Independent, doesn't really matter, while you're serving. That's all I'm saying.
Okay.
So Councilman Wade, I respect you, and I appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
And I want to congratulate Sean on his reelection. I want to congratulate Bill on your reelection, and yourself on your reelection. You know, the people have spoken, and the three of you have won. And I look forward to serving with all three of you for the next several years. I am the current GOP chairman, I won't deny that. Done it a long time. And when I walk into council meetings, I'm one of seven council members who represent all of the citizens of Murfreesboro, much like all of you represents the citizens of Murfreesboro. I approach matters on the city council with an open mind as to what is best for all of the citizens of the city of Murfreesboro. And I leave my GOP hat at the door when it comes to matters relating to the council. I form that opinion and view independently, as well as conferring with people whom I deeply respect on this council, such as Ms. Scales Harris, as well as Mr. Shacklett. But since you brought it up, I've got a few comments to share back to you. If you are unhappy that the local GOP endorsed two Republicans over yourself when looking at your perfect voting record of another party, then that's surprising. I called you up ahead of time and told you, out of respect for you and as a fellow council member, that that's what we were doing. And your response to me was, you appreciated the call, you understand, and that it's just business. With keeping with the spirit of it's just business, that's what we do as a party. Voters call us and ask us, who should we vote for? Are they a Democrat or Republican? Whether it's a nonpartisan race or not, they want to know. And so that's what we were doing as a party this election cycle, just like we've done every election cycle. When I'm sitting here as a city councilman, I approach the votes and business of the city as to what's best for all the citizens of the city, and keep the business of the local GOP out of the business of the city. I do what is best for the citizens and constituents, and I take their calls and emails into my votes and decisions. Case in point, I voted against the Rockvale annexation after lots of calls and emails from citizens out there. I voted against the Keystone Project over the very same thing. I voted against the NHC expansion over there at Adams Place. And there's three other Republicans on this council that voted yes, and I voted no. So I don't really, I guess, follow your logic, your inference, that maybe I'm doing things in the best interest of the GOP, and not what is best for the citizens of Murfreesboro.
You want me to respine?
No, hang on, I'm almost finished.
All right. I didn't know you had a letter.
Oh, yeah? I just wanted to make sure I was crystal clear, I didn't want to rant.
Well, let me, let me comment before you go on, because you did make a statement. I didn't ask for your endorsement. I didn't ask for the Democrats to endorse me. So I want to make, this ain't about an endorsement. This is about, do we think it's ethical? Do we think it's right for you to be over the chair of a party, out campaigning for a candidate for, behind your colleagues? That's, that's all I'm asking. I asked, I asked Mr. Tucker to look into that. That's all I asked. I didn't make it personal. You're making it personal because you, you're, you're acting like I wanted your endorsement. I didn't ask for your endorsement. It's not about Republican, Democrat, or Independent. It's about, is it okay for an elected official to be a chair of a political party?
Apparently, there's no state law.
I didn't ask, I didn't ask you, I asked Mr. Tucker to check on it. That's all I asked.
You're going to check.
Okay.
But I can assure you that according to the GOP bylaws.
GOP?
Have to, couldn't conflict with state bylaws. It's perfectly okay for me to be on council and to be the chair. But to your point, I've discussed with my executive committee, and moving forward, we're not going to have elected officials on the GOP executive committee.
That's awesome. Thank you.
We're going to do that.
Okay.
We've been discussing it for the last several months.
You answered, you answered the question.
So that is headed in the right direction.
Thank you.
So, but if you're inferring that, that I'm unethical, or this was wrong.
I never said you're unethical. I just said, I wanted Adam to check, to see if an elected official could be a chair of any political party. I didn't, I didn't say just Republican Party, I said any party.
To my knowledge, there's no state law that interferes with that or prohibits that. There's no federal law.
I asked Mr. Tucker to check.
And I look forward to Adam investigating it. Perhaps he'll find something in some very out-of-the-way liberal state like California or New York, but I don't think he'll find it in Tennessee.
You never know. I mean, I didn't know this flower was coming out neither.
Yep, neither did I.
Yeah, so you never know. And that's why I keep telling you, I asked Mr. Tucker to check, to see if it was okay.
But I thank you for bringing it up. I think it's a good conversation, and, you know, I won't be the chair next year. I'm going to turn them out. And I'm sure that the next person that comes in, they will continue to do what we've usually done, and that's inform voters and educate voters on the candidates. And that's what we did this cycle.
Thank you.
But I'm going to tell you what we're not going to do. We're not going to get ready to split this council over political parties. That's one thing, as long as I'm sitting up here, we're not going to do that, guys. We're going to sit here and continue to do city business, we're going to respect each other in all times, in all situations. That's what we're going to do, as long as I'm on this council, and I'm going, call me mama, because I'm 72, so call me mama. We're not going to do this. We're not going to fight each other in any political thing, because I tell you, that's the worst thing that's happened to our nation is parties. Because, see, on Judgment Day, six, one sixteenth of an inch in our skin separates us. Once we get past that one sixteenth of an inch, we all have red blood. And on Judgment Day, we're going to have to go before the Lord and make an account for things. We, he put us here to represent the people, and that's what we're going to do, because we're not going to do this.
Well, we're not fighting, we're just having a discussion.
Okay, well, we're not going to have many more like this.
I respect Kurt's opinion.
I respect Austin's opinion, but I do have an opinion. I can say.
And I, and I respect that, and you deserve to, for Adam to check.
I called the state party today and asked them, I said, am I wrong? They said, no.
I didn't, I didn't say you was wrong. See, you may want to end it. I didn't say you was wrong, I just asked Adam to check.
I look forward to him looking into it.
I was just going to say, hey, this is a, and it's already kind of dissolved now, but I was going to speak up in the middle and say, hey, this is a disagreement between two individuals in the council, let's, let's kind of hush this down and temper actions with wisdom, and, and kind of step off and discuss this man-to-man, instead of getting tempers flared and getting upset, and like Madeline said, get, get a civil war inside the council. So, but it's already settled now, so let's move on.
Let me, let me speak to something that Sean and I have talked about, that I think, just to get your input, this is moving in a more positive direction, and I hope we have some citizens that would like to participate in this as well. You know, if anything, the last few months have taught us is that we need to better understand how our government works for us, so that we can work with our citizens into making our community a better place to live. You know, we're fortunate that, over the years, we've had individuals that have found a way forward, maybe even in the midst of difficult and difference, differences of opinion, but they've found a path forward. But as we've talked, some of us have talked about the issue of having civility in the conversation and introducing, and our responsibility as elected officials to help the public understand how to have a civil discourse over complicated issues. So I'm hoping in the next few months, we can come together, and those of us that are so inclined, maybe offering an opportunity for our citizens to come together, learn about how government functions in a citizens academy or something like that, to where they can experience a deeper understanding of how their government works. And then, in the midst of that, learn how to respectfully dialogue over some of these difficult issues that we face in our community. I don't know what tomorrow's going to bring, there's always difficult issues that are in front of us. But the one thing I know, that the resources and attitudes to accomplish whatever we want to accomplish as a city are, is available right here in our community. And sometimes when we cut off respectful dialogue and don't know how to civilly talk to each other, we cut off our nose to spite our face. So I, I think we have some responsibility as elected officials to create that, set the table for those kind of, that education, that experience to happen. And, and it doesn't mean that we have to come to agreement, we have to agree on everything. It means somehow we can walk away from a discussion and not hate each other, and, and still agree to disagree. And that way, I think we can, we can address whatever is in front of us. So anyway, if you're interested in that, I invite the public or any of my colleagues on council, if you're interested in being a part of that, I've talked to some people at MTSU as far as resources that could help set some curriculum for us. If you're interested in, in participating and being a part of that, as we formulate something akin to a citizens academy or something like that for our citizens, let me know. And then, because it's, it's very in the genesis stages right now, still trying to congeal the idea to say what it can be, and, you know, what we're actually going towards. So if you're interested in doing that, please contact me, because I think that's a vital thing, not only as we approach November, but as we approach whatever the next decade is, you know, we need to learn how our government functions and not be ignorant about how it all comes together, and how can we, as citizens, effectively engage in the deliberative process. And I think sometimes the first time people ever engage their government is when they, when we have an open hearing, and they've got three minutes to talk, and it's, it's nerve-wracking, because they don't really know how to do that. And if they're running for office, and, you know, I talked to both the candidates that were on the, that were running this last time, both of them good minds and good hearts, that they, and they have the desire to serve our public, to be public servants. But how do you get there? Do you just put your name in the ballot, you fill out a form, and you move forward? Or how can we, not from a particular bent, but how can we educate our next public servants, the next people that are going to be on council? Because the legacy that we have, folks, is. Because the legacy that we have, folks, is one of collegial, working together for the good of our city, not tracking a particular direction or bent, but respecting that when we do have to vote no on something, if there's four votes that say yes, we're behind that and we want it to succeed. And I want that kind of atmosphere to continue on our council for the good of our city. But if you're interested in seeing, helping me congeal this idea, please let me know.
One more thing I want to say, I, I refuse to go back. I refuse to go, I've been through a lot. And when my father was elected in April of 1964, that night, bricks started coming through our windows, crosses burning in our yard, my daddy receiving phone calls, I know a year calling him the N name, threatening him to go out the door and all that. I refuse to go back to that. But one thing I learned about them is how to handle things as a Christian. Because at council meeting, he almost had a heart attack on the issue, went home and dropped with a heart attack, a heart attack. I'm not going back, guys and ladies. Let's get it together.
Yeah. The only thing I, you know, I'd hate to say I'm the elder statesman up here, my hairline will agree to that, but, you know, there are some, as Councilman Wright said, some conversations that the best thing you can do is sit over a cup of coffee and may agree to disagree. Madeline slapped me around a couple of times since I've been on council, and typically she's right. But, you know, the minute that we lose the chance to be able to have a conversation individually and not through social media and other media outlets is the minute we need to reevaluate. So, and that goes for everyone, too. I mean, that, you know, I'm sure we have staff members that may tend to have disagreements, but typically, that never works out well without sitting and talking to somebody face-to-face. So with that, we'll stand adjourned.